All right, Jeremigos, welcome everybody. I know we haven't been doing this in a little bit of a while, but you know.
Or if people are watching the recordings of this, it's simply a welcome to the next edition. Time will not have even happened.
Hold on, something I have to take some audio out as soon as I find my, there we go. Oh, the joys, right?
Right.
Okay, so back to, back to your point.
Either it's been a while or it's been a few minutes.
That's true. That, that is true. I mean, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of editing that Rodney will have to do on, when he makes the supercut of this, so it'll be as if we, you know, hadn't left. Although, you know, you and I will probably have gone for like a costume change or something like that.
Well, that's true. That's true. But you know, it's been, I've been wearing something different every time, I think. So, yeah, next time I'll remember it. I'll say, we're at the same thing every session like they do on TV shows, right? So you don't know those cuts as well.
Yeah. So, and, and we're starting to draw a crowd. So Lena says hi. Fresh from the Alaskan Builder Summit.
Yes, who's supposed to be taking time off? But hopefully she's just here to hear the dulcet tones of King Bob. Relax a little bit while she listens to us talk all things Atlassian.
Atlassian, especially about JSM and, and getting ready for the 420.
And as long as she's not in charge, it's gotta be more relaxing.
I'm sure. She, if all she has to do is just listen to us, then I think it's all good.
Indeed.
All right.
So we're gonna go talk about that playbook today, huh?
We are. So one of the things where, when we last left our heroes, King Bob and hashtag, I believe Sarah, right? Um, we were looking at best practices for incident management and what we were looking at were the distinct phases in incident management where you triage, you communicate, you find it and you learn. Right? And that's just an oversimplification of it. But there are some tools that you can use that are created by Atlassian. And the best part of these tools, they're free. Atlassian just gives them away.
Yes. Not sure how to do something? Just go look at the playbook.
Yeah. And, and what we're talking about are a group of what Atlassian calls plays. Uh, and they've been bundled into a playbook. So
Yes.
Um, there are a few of the plays that relate to incident management. And so these are some of these plays from the Atlassian team playbook. We have an incident response values play. Basically, why don't you read what, what that does?
So this one is gonna help you identify what your team values most during incident response. And then creating a plan to live to those values consistently.
And then
times, up times, et cetera.
Yep. And then, um, we learned during incident management, uh, when there is an incident that communications is important. And so, uh, we might want to take a look at the incident response communications play. Uh, just to see what's needed and
Yeah, I would say that a lot of these things are, you know, a bit of a tripod, maybe a full four-legged table. But all of these pillars are just as important to, um, to making sure you manage those incidents well. And so with this response communication play, so that can help you spot the gaps in your incident communication practices. Create a better communication plan for future incidents, right? So you're going to take that to help you analyze, you know, were there some people who maybe got left out who needed to be there? And whether that was your stakeholders, was that your customers? Um, were that other, was that other teams that were affected by it? That kind of play is gonna help you walk through that and determine, hey, these people also need to be part of our communication plan.
Awesome. All right. Now, um, one thing that can help reduce uh, both the frequency and the severity is making sure you have adequate monitoring. And so, uh, you might need guidance from the health monitor play.
Yeah. And so this one is gonna be not necessarily about the technology. But what are those things about your team, you know? So just like you're gonna have incident monitoring, health monitoring on your applications, you might send a heartbeat, right? Make sure those things have a pulse and they're working and doing the things they should. Some of those incident type of situations can happen amongst your team. When your team isn't working optimally, when there's misunderstandings about potentially about the roles of the team and who's responsible for different areas. And so the health monitor play, as it says, it's gonna give you an honest look in the mirror. It's gonna walk you through. What's nice is it's this thing asking those questions. So people, uh, you know, it's not somebody coming in and saying, you know, and questioning you. It's, it's a neutral party using this play to come in and ask those things and help you think through those. So to make your team stronger and it utilizes eight attributes that are most commonly found amongst the healthy team. So how can you work towards getting better at those attributes?
Okay. Now, having, having a healthy team is, is one thing. But the team really, in order for it to, uh, really work well, they have to have goals. They have to have an idea of what their north star is. And so, um, in the business world, they've started looking at OKRs or objectives and key results. And that actually is a play in the playbook.
Yep. And just like Bob said, it's helping to define those goals and making plans to measure them. What do we hope to achieve? How are we gonna know we're achieving it? And I would say those things are also probably gonna be informed by your incident response values play, right? So if these are the things we value, these are the things we should probably start creating some OKRs around and ways to measure it.
Yeah. And, and you can tell that there is some interplay between these places. These aren't standalone things. They're very, very interconnected.
That's an awesome point.
All right. One thing to go is that, um, so there are these things that transcend into practices. Objectives and key results, admittedly, they're really more medium range, long range, right? Um, you, you often look at them either on a quarterly basis up to an annual basis. But there is stuff that you do as a team every day. And one of those is the stand-ups play.
Yeah. So how do you have your regular team huddles, right? How are you sharing your progress? Even to the point I imagine of what methodologies are using, right? Is it, what did I do yesterday? What am I gonna do today? What are my blockers? Um, there's different kinds of ways that your team can interact with each other to make sure that they're conveying the right information at the right time in order to keep things humming.
Yep. And then one other, uh, play, especially to help you learn, is by going through the retrospective.
For sure. So how do we look back? How do we objectively, hopefully, and unimpassionately? That's not a word, but you know what I mean? Dispassionately, maybe to an extent, you, there may be things that you're passionate about, but during a retrospective, right? How do you really hold up that, that, that mirror again on your team? How do you talk to each other honestly about how things went? And more importantly, how can we make them better in the future? Let's hold on to those things that went really well. And what are the things that we can maybe stop doing, um, to improve our team? Cause a lot of times what you stop doing can be just as important. And so that play is going to help you do those. Um, so it can guide your IT ops and dev teams, right? So this is about more than maybe just your straight up operations or your incident management teams. All the teams are gonna benefit from things like this.
Yep. Yep. And usually of, of the, the prototypical Scrum ceremonies, my favorite is always the retrospective. It's, it's the one where you really, uh, dispassionately look at
There you go.
How you improve.
And even if you're not a Scrum team, it's a good idea.
Absolutely. And so there's a link here in the course materials for the Atlassian team playbook.
Yeah. And it's really, honestly, they can lay it out like, I mean, it's playbook, but they lay it out like it's a board game. Here's the equipment you need. Here's the time you need. Here's how many players you need. So I enjoy that aspect of it.
Okay, quiz time. You ready?
No, because it's been a while.
Okay. Well, you, you know, I'm, I'm sure we can have like five minutes on each, each question as, as we hem and haw through.
All right.
The answers.
Or it'll be really easy.
Yes. All right. Uh, okay, this is, we're gonna start off, uh, really, really slow. True, false, you know, it's a coin flip. Unless it lands on its edge and then, you know, we're stopped. All right. Sigma Enterprises CEO emphasizes striving for zero incidents as the optimal business approach. True or false? This strategy is correct, given the significant costs that incidents can impose on the business. I have my answer locked in.
You do? I mean, I kinda wanna say false because it's unrealistic. I think you, but I do think you can strive for that. I think that's worthy. Um, I just worry that, you know, it being a little demoralizing, to be honest with you. What, what was your response, Bob?
I think it's, I, I, I think it's foolish to go for an absolute like zero incidents. I think there's always gonna be something. And, uh, and as a matter of fact, we, uh, we are coming on the tails of a week, uh, a week and several days since the, a really major incident happened, made the news, affected a lot of sites like monday.com and like Atlassian. And that would be, uh, Amazon Web Services, US East One is notorious. It's one of those where, um, if US East One, um, catches, uh, sneezes, the whole internet catches a cold.
Yeah.
Type of thing. So, uh, so that's why I think that, um, zero incidents in, in my mind is a little unrealistic. And I'm thinking false.
Yeah. It's aspirational for sure, but let's see.
All right. All right. Cross your fingers.
Probably also not on your test, on your exam, but
All right. False. Submitting our answer. Oh, look at that.
Hooray.
There we go. The goal is not zero incidents. Change and improvements to your business always bring risk. That's actually a fair point, too.
Because you could block people from innovating, from making changes. If you go ultra conservative and say zero all the time, then yeah, doesn't leave a lot of room for growth.
Yes. All right. Ready for the next question? All right, here we go. All right. Which of these best practices should the incident response team follow to manage incidents? All right. So we have to choose all the ones we think are correct. Communicating with your customers as soon as possible after the incident occurs. Assigning clear roles and responsibilities to the incident response team or to the response team. Creating a post-incident review of the incident. Introducing as many change gates as possible in your software development process, so incidents never occur.
Gave my votes.
All right. So you think it's A, B, and C?
I do.
Okay. I think those are, I think those are correct. And I think the last one is not correct. It's, um, the funny thing about that is, um, introducing change gates always slows down, not only slows down, um, uh, innovation, but it also, um, doesn't work. And that's the opposite effect. More incidents typically occur.
Yeah. And could slow down your resolution, too. When you have a lot of change gates in there and you need a change to fix an incident.
Exactly. All right. Drum roll, please. Oh, look at that.
Hooray. There was much rejoicing.
Always slow things down. Great work. Okay. So now we are moving on
To a new course.
Next lesson.
And that Atlassian, on the one side it says lesson, on the other side it says course. Which one is it? Is it a space or a project? Is it an issue or an item? Come on.
This is
I suppose the course is made up of lessons, so I'll retract that.
I think I think, I think the links are funny.
Yeah, cause now I see we're down. Projects.
Yeah.
Yeah, like took us someplace weird.
It took us someplace weird. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna manually pull an audible and jump to this one. To configure service projects for service request management.
Yeah.
All right. So we're moving beyond incident management. We're looking at a different book, so to speak. If you remember me talking ad nauseam about, uh, ITIL, which is, uh, basically implementation for ITSM, IT Service Management. ITIL is one of the, um, more, it's, it's, it's one of the standards out there that people strive for. And so, uh, old ITIL, like version three or so, uh, looked at each management process as a book in a library. And so you would have incident management, knowledge management, and now we're looking at a different book. Uh, service request management or service management.
So the L in ITIL is our library. These are the books in our library. Love it.
Yep. All right. So by the end of this lesson, we're going to define service request management. List advantages for using service request management. Describe those common use cases and then identify the tools from Atlassian that we will be using for service request management. Okay. All right. So what are we doing with service request management? Basically, um, we are using service request management so organizations can standardize response, coordination, and fulfillment of user requests, otherwise known as service requests. So, uh, these things could be anything and everything. You could, uh, use it for an onboarding situation where, um, you know, uh, you know, Sarah gets a new job at, at her new company and so she needs a new laptop and maybe a new monitor and dock.
Could be go update a database with new information about the new employee, right? Maybe it's something you don't have access to.
Or, or, yeah, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say the services, right, are, are those things that somebody else has to take care of for you?
Yep.
And you need a way to ask for them. And so that's where it's somebody's providing a service to you. And I know that sounds like, hey, you're just using the word to describe it. But when you just stop for a moment and, and really think about what that's, you know, what does it mean to be of service to somebody? Or to do something for them? That's how I always frame that in my head. When we think about the differences between an incident, for instance, or a change. Certainly you could say, yes, they're providing you with a service, um, but they are their own types.
Yep.
This is that, that more overarching area.
Yeah. And so, uh, you know, Sarah, you described people that fulfill those service requests. Uh, we typically call them the service desk, right? And we try and pool together, um, all of those service requests, usually through something like an email inbox or a customer portal, um, so that they can be collected together. They can be triaged through, uh, queues and then they can be dispatched, assigned, and then fulfilled.
Yeah. And, and you know, one of those things, these are in-out situations. These are not necessarily, when we talk about services, um, we're not necessarily talking about great big projects. Now, they can spawn them, but this is, this is gonna be very, oftentimes very transactional when we talk about. Especially in the world of ITSM and ITIL, right? These are, hey, I need this done. It happens. We're moving on to the next thing.
Yep. And so this is an example of the service, uh, request management at work, right? So we've got a customer, say Sarah, uh, she needs access to Jira Cloud. Right? And so she puts in either an email or clicks on a, uh, specific item in a service portal. Fills out the form, clicks on submit. All right. That gets shipped off to the service team. They look at that request that Sarah created. And there may be times when something like that might need approval. So, uh, there might be an approval to Sarah's, Sarah's boss or Sarah's manager. Hey, does Sarah really need this? Boss says, yep. Uh, clicks on that. And then when that approval gets approved, then the service desk agent will go through and fulfill that request. Or possibly even move the request to somebody who can better assist.
Yeah. And those approvals, you know, a lot of times those are gonna come in the areas of budgetary.
Mm-hmm.
Security, right? Um, those are the things, if you are going to be setting up your service desk or those are the questions as we go back thinking also about best practices. Um, you're gonna have those conversations with those teams who own those areas to determine, you know, is that something that can go straight through or does somebody need to look at it? And then you're, you're thinking about what are those reasons? Somebody might have to look at that and, and do an explicit approval on something.
Right. Right. And sometimes the approval process might include like, have you taken the appropriate training?
Yeah.
So, you know. All right. Uh, let's see, um, JSM, Jira Service Management can allow you to easily move requests between different team projects or create linked work items between projects. And then after resolving the request, the agent will close the ticket, consults the customer, make sure they're satisfied. Uh, by, you know, throwing that lovely little customer feedback survey that we love, you know?
Just a few stars is all it takes.
Yes. Well, you know, we're really happy if you give us five stars, right?
Yes.
All right. So let's take a look at this in action. So this is, this is Sarah making the request on the, on the customer portal. Um, that request gets assessed with other ones, possibly in a queue. Agent will look at that and potentially um, there might be an approval that's needed. Uh, if it gets approved, it gets, uh, received by the agent who then works on some actions, fulfills it, closes the request. And once the request is closed, that's when we collect our feedback, that survey.
Bob, can I side quest with you real quick?
Absolutely.
Why assess versus triage? I struggled with this and I felt like somebody once gave me some, some, something very specific about triage. But I was curious your take on that.
Um, I think assess really has to do with on a, uh, so assessing, um, really has to do with the, are you gonna do it versus are you not gonna do it? Right? As opposed to triage, what triage is, is when do we do it? How in the comparison of, in, in the comparison of other requests or other, other things out there in a queue, where does this fit in the queue?
And you know, that resonates me with me very well. I first heard the word triage on MASH. So, right? And so for them, it wasn't, are we gonna operate or not kind of situations? But it was like, how critical? Was, is this particular case? And where do we put, you know, that patient in line with that? Where to your point assessment is, yeah, there's, there's, it's more than just saying, yes, we're gonna do it. Assessment is, hey, let's take a look at this. Let's make sure we have all the information related to it. Okay, I'm down.
Yep. There's the, and, and that's, I think the, the key differences. Um, you know, in this, uh, there are times when you can say no.
Mm-hmm.
Like if, if, you know.
Yeah, I wanna, I, you know, I wanna go get a Miro license. We don't have it yet, but I want you guys to go and sell Miro for me. We can say no. Request denied.
I want a pony.
Yeah. So we can say no to those things. All right. I'll go ahead and take this one. So our service request management, like what are some of the advantages of doing this? Um, so organizations who want to deliver value for customers at lower cost, speeding up our service delivery, which inherently increases the value. Providing services with less effort using self-service and automation, which is something that, uh, as we were talking earlier. And, and I see there's a couple of topics down below us, talking about that kind of intake. We're seeing more and more ways that intake is going to be possible beyond the portal, beyond the emails, getting into the idea of the virtual agents and so forth. I think there's gonna be more ways, um, those requests are gonna be able to be sent in. But all of those ways that we do that help us do that faster and helps us get the right information, um, upfront. And to get that right information, we want to be very customer focused. We want to be knowledge centric and streamlined with automation. So we want to tie together collecting that information that we know we need from the customers. Doing it in a way that's going to make it easy for them. We're gonna combine that in with our knowledge bases that we might have created over in Confluence. So again, we're going back to that idea of maybe they can even self-service. And then automating wherever possible or anything that's repeated, um, especially low risk repeatability. Let's see what we can do with automation to remove those repetitive tasks and potentially error prone tasks. So when we apply those principles across the efforts, what are our benefits? Strengthen the support team, making it easy for customers to ask for help and get answers. And then using tech to keep pace with changing organization needs. Now I do see a blue eye on there. It's not in one of those blue boxes, but probably not a bad thing. Because one of the things we know on the 420 is there is like a level of ITIL awareness in there, right? So might be worth paying attention to this, but
Yes, definitely. Okay. Moving on to goals. All right. So, uh, some of the, um, some of the goals Sarah talked about before, we can, um, expand on that. Uh, so one of the things that we want to do for good service request management can do. Uh, they can improve customer satisfaction. What does that look like? It looks like you want to improve that service by resolving those service requests more quickly. And then one way of making sure that we have good service management is so that costs are reduced. And that looks like delivering value at a lower cost. Uh, so you can do that easily by offering ticket deflection, uh, mechanisms. So having that knowledge base, like, like Sarah talks about, tying that knowledge, Confluence, uh, knowledge base. So that, um, there's a little bit of a self-service, uh, aspect to that. Uh, somebody can immediately go. So some of the smaller things like, how do I hook up my VPN? My laptop to the VPN, that might be a knowledge base article that you can bring top of, top of mind. And let the, uh, let the IT service people work on other issues.
I was just gonna say, right? Cause when somebody asks the question and then somebody has to answer the question and/or when somebody needs some guidance and that person has to provide that guidance, right? We're doubling the effort, both for the customer and the person providing the service. So anything we can take that down to where it's just that one person or no people, in the case of automation. That's when we see some wins, so long as it's telling it the right things, of course.
Yep, absolutely.
But that's where continuous learning and improvement come in.
It looks like we want to continuously learn from the service requests. Uh, get an idea of, uh, what our customers are really looking at just by, uh, seeing what their experiences are, seeing what the most popular requests are. Um, you know, Wayne Gretzky, the, the NHL hockey player, great, uh, always said, skate to where the puck is going. So.
Yes. Blue box.
Blue box. Let's, what is What's what is what's that blue box say?
So our service requests are often recurring. So efficient IT teams follow a repeatable procedure to handle them.
Okay.
Right? No need to reinvent all the things.
All right.
Very process driven.
Yes, incredibly process driven. All right, so let's take a look at some uh, some service request management examples. All right, so we can see where um. What goes on with service request management? Uh, team members, they often need to request these things. New software, access to the VPN, new hardware. Uh, now, there might be situations where team members may not need to go all the way to IT and occupy an IT uh engineers uh time. They could manage for themselves these things, right, Sarah? Or?
Yeah, or where the team members can manage employee onboarding.
Yes.
And hiring.
Yes. Ooh, there's an, there's an eye.
Blue eye. So this goes back to what I was saying earlier, right? The difference between service request versus, yes, you know, you might look at those other items and say, but those are also services. But how they 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 differ is that it stands out as it resolves around users submitting requests for new items, whether it be access to a service, a new phone, or information. And the cat wants to come in, but I'm saying I'm going to let her out right now. I just heard a little scratching. She's like, service management, I want to talk about that.
Like, yeah, my cats aren't here, so. All right, so now that we've talked about service management, how it fits into um ITSM. Uh, what are the Atlassian tools for service request management? And a big part of this is going to be uh, Jira Service Management, JSM. That helps your team set up the service centers that we talked about and the service desks very quickly. So what is a service center?
Interesting. So it's the help center slash service center.
Right.
A little shift in in terms there.
Right, so the service center is basically the collection of service desks. So there might be specific um. Uh, in in our help center, right? J JSM has a help center. This help center is the collection of all of the individual portals for service uh desk projects inside of that JSM instance. We might have one for HR, we might have one for facilities, we might have one for operations, you know? Uh, one for the engineering applications that we have. Now.
I was only going to say what you start to see in there is some of that enterprise service management. Because as we're talking about service specifically.
Mm hmm.
So where we might, you know, it is possible one of our portals could include changes, change requests, incident requests, and service requests. We also then have the appearance now of these other service centers. So where, what are other organ, you know, other parts of our business that provide some sort of service? To to, you know, the rest of the business. I worked for a company where we did lots of translation work, lots of localization work. So we might have had a desk that was set up specifically just to request translation services. And we could have set up a help center just like this.
Yep. So this is the overall collection. Each one of these is a service desk. Or a service portal. It's basically that primary means of communication between the uh, the team that provides the service and the customers. So you can see here that there are um, a few things that you could use uh for this in terms of help for devices. Uh, you know, connecting up to wifi or connecting up to the VPN and then uh, software and application help.
For the purposes of the four twenty. I would say there is still a correlation of one project equals one portal.
Yeah.
Um, but we also know that's also changing a little bit.
That's also changing a little bit. There's, yeah, there's the the newer things out there.
Yeah, so if you are a heavy user of some of the features, especially in the premium area, and you are familiar with the idea of creating multiple help centers and creating landing pages that sort of mimic portals, et cetera, right? To to reorganize your presentation out to your customers to make it easier for your customers to interact with you. Because we are talking about the four twenty, I would say that would just be one of your takeaways is don't get too much thinking in there about what actually is comprised of a help center. So your help center is basically you're where all of your different portals are accessible from. And then each one of those portals is going to be tied to a project.
Yep. All right. So some example service desks, as we've seen, each one of these service desks may be part of that help center. Or be a tile on the help center or the uh, uh, service center. Oh, here we go. Help desks are often IT centric. They focus on fixing work items. Service desks focus on delivering service to their customers and are customer centric.
There's theory and practice. Practice in my experience has said those are the same, they tend to be in the same place.
All right, now, some of the tools that come with your service management are are typically uh, features. And they help out with uh, uh, service request management. And so we can actually see, uh, we have support for email. What does that mean?
That customers can send emails. And in fact, they can, you can have up to 10 different email addresses in just one of your portals to create maybe ones related specifically to incidents. Maybe ones related to a general service request. You could also have one that's your VIP only email address. So that those VIPs just have to know an email address in their address book in order to send something in and they don't have to go to the portals. Um, but yes, so we can absolutely do it that way.
Yep. All right, another one is the knowledge base. You can tie a knowledge base for ticket deflection. What does that knowledge base have?
Yep, it's got those useful articles and common answers, some of those FAQs. Or sometimes it's even just tips out there that are available when you search in your help center. And oftentimes available when you start typing in the summary of an item, those knowledge based articles can appear.
Okay, and then another one is a request queue or queues.
That's for our agents. So especially when they could be a queue for unassessed, a queue for assessed. Um, there can be queues based on service requests. So anyway, we can filter and slice and dice those incoming requests. We can create queues from them. But basically, they are a way to organize them to make the agents able to quickly find those items that they need to work on.
Okay, now a key part of um, allowing us to progress and um uh, efficiently work these uh, service requests is automation.
Yeah, and you know, automation, so I'm going to actually throw in two sides of this. And there's probably more sides like a, you know, a D and D dice. Um, one of the sides says, hey, there are actions that I repeatedly take. If there's actions I repeatedly take, if that's to solve it, then I could go use automation. And I see we're going to talk about, I think we talk about automation somewhere unless we already did. But they are create automation rules for service.
After the quiz, yeah, exactly.
So we'll dive more into that. But you know, on the one hand, there are things that you could do to solve the requests. On the other hand, there's also automations that you can use to enhance the metadata about those requests as well for your reporting. So maybe if sometimes people miss things, um, you can, you can add the things into those requests to to help you measure that.
Yep. All right, one thing that might be important for our uh, service desk team is managing the SLAs.
Our service level agreements. So we say, you know, if we're talking about what's what we value, we value providing timely, accurate service to our customers. So let's define timely and SLAs is how we can do that. And then remember, those are our timers. When do we start counting that time? When do we pause that time? And when we stop that time? And so that's going to apply on your service requests in the same way it's going to apply on your incidents, for instance.
Yep. Okay, now, how do we see how well our service team is doing? We have reports and metrics.
Yeah, so all the things we did above, right? Whether that was configuring our portals, collecting that data, configuring our SLAs. Our reports and metrics are going to be how we can look back to see how we're doing on our agent productivity, our customer satisfaction when we enable that CSAT and our support costs. We might not have very specific numbers tied in on our items uh, that relate to that. But you are able to see overall trends of what's happening.
Okay. Um, now, a common part of service requests is, and we've, we've gone through the example before. You know, getting getting new equipment, getting um, or or acquiring licenses. And often this comes under asset management.
Yeah, because we have to know, hmm, do we have computers out there ready to ship? Do we have licenses that we are able to apply for those requests? And those are just a few of the things we can manage with our asset management. And we can tie those into our users. So then we would be able to say, hey, user comes to our portal. They can select their piece of hardware to let us know that maybe they need a new keyboard because their keyboard isn't working. So the assets integrates with service management to ensure the assets are tracked, used, and maintained. So we're talking about the whole life cycle. We can manage there out in uh, JSM. And I say JSM for now, assets. So they are valuable items, tangible or intangible are accounted for. Because we would, no, I'm not going to go there, although yes, I am. Because technically, the assets, we can connect those into our change requests. And we can connect them into our incident requests. So in that same way, we can connect them out with our service requests as well. So just real quick on that second paragraph, right? Because enterprise asset management, tracking physical goods, software, intellectual property, personnel, those what we were talking about with tying all of that together.
Yes. Now, advanced forms, uh, these last two, these really help out the customer. The first of these are going to be advanced forms. And what that is, is a way for the customer to easily identify what they want when they come on to the portal.
Yeah, and easily give you that information because I'm going to argue it's definitely both ways when we talk about advanced forms. So they are still referencing this idea of per form pro forma. We don't really. But what they're talking about is there's the request form that's associated with the request type. And then there's the, if you go into the admin panel, you go into requests and then you go into forms. And then that's what we're talking about here. And those were those places where you can add a lot of customization onto the form to collect that right information. So and those those fields, generally speaking, um, live just there on that form to provide the additional context for the agents in order to fulfill those requests.
Yep, and the last one that our customer can use uh, for the uh, service request management, conversational ticketing.
Yeah, so streamlining support requests from Slack or Teams into Jira. So, hey, I work in Teams a lot. I'm just all day, you know, responding back and forth to people. I don't know where that portal is, but I know where things are in Teams. So I can go find that bot, right? Or that way that I access it over in Teams. And I can just start a conversation there. And we, you have a way within JSM to configure it, to understand some of the prompts and to take people down paths to help create that ticket straight from that chat as opposed to having to go anywhere else. And they can then even see all the updates, et cetera, over in those chats as well.
Yep. Okay, uh, here's a video. We're not going to play the video.
No, we're not.
But we are going to do the quiz. All right, so it looks like we dry. So we're gonna um, I'm going to, Sarah's going to tell me where things go. Take uh, you know, from the from the left and drag it over.
All right, well, I always start on the right side, though, and then I find the one on the left. And they've changed this, so it's just you have to click them one after the other. So first, we're going to click click on submit deflect automatically route.
Okay. And then.
And I'm going to say that's fulfill. No, we're. To read all of them before I can do it. Classify, assign and collaborate is going to be respond, complete is going to be fulfill. So yes, submit deflect automatically route is request. So click request. There we go.
All right, that was correct.
Classify, assign, collaborate is going to be respond. And complete, survey and measure will be our fulfill.
All right, look at that.
Yeah, they recently changed that interface and it was really screwing with me.
Yeah, I thought you were, we were supposed to drag and I was like, right, and it wasn't dragging, so.
Yeah.
All right, next question. Ronnie is preparing a presentation to convince his management team of the benefits of implementing service request management. Which of the following advantages should Ronnie communicate to his management team? And there are four requests or four responses. Uh, we have to choose uh, one or more of the ones that we think are correct. All right, so improve customer satisfaction through quicker resolution of requests. Increase costs due to the need for additional resources. Streamline processes with automatic and self-service options. Enhanced incident resolution by focusing on root cause analysis.
I think.
Okay, so I got, I got my choices locked down. What do you, what do you got?
Okay, I've got two. How many do you have?
I have two.
Perfect. So yes, we're going to improve customer satisfaction. And we're going to streamline our processes. We certainly are not going to increase our costs by being better at what we do. And quite frankly, and incident resolution focusing on root cause analysis doesn't really enhance your incident resolution. It helps you eventually, but.
And it's not really tied to service.
No.
There we go.
It's non germane. How's that?
There we go. Ladder is more related to problem management. That we've talked about before.
Yes.
All right, last one. Karishma is looking to streamline her service request responses and eliminate repet repetitive tasks in her IT consulting company. Which tool available with service uh, juror service management can help her achieve this goal? So streamline uh, responses, eliminate repetitive tasks, choose one. Request queues, automation, SLA management, asset management.
Automation.
And you are correct.
Look at us.
Yeah, look at us. All right, moving on, let's see uh, how much of the next lesson we can do, creating JIRA automation rules for service request management. Uh, it looks like we're going to create three different automations. We're going to uh, create an automation to escalate work items when the SLA is breached. Uh, create an automation to auto assign work items to your team. And create an automation, this is probably going to be a big one for onboarding new employees. All right. So we talked about the benefits of automation in the last course. So just to kind of review what automation does, we have uh, within JIRA and juror service management. Uh, we have um, automation rules. All right, they help perform actions based on specific triggers and conditions. All right, and JSM reduces the team's workload by eliminating repetitive tasks when integrated into self-service capabilities. So let's take a look at some of these. when integrated into self-service capabilities. So let's take a look at some of these examples of automation. So we could create a comment on new requests with the response time embedded into the comment.
So in here, it's suggesting uh set up the automated response teams, sorry, automated response system for new service requests. So acknowledge the receipt of the request, get that thanks, we're working on it email, that's the default one that goes out. Um, but it could provide an estimated response time based on its priority. Proactive communication plays a crucial role in managing customer expectations effectively. So our automation could have something uh, a sort of matrix type of thing, if it's this priority and that type of request, it could be about this long, so we can build that into our automation to post a comment onto it. Again, to set, because we're not necessarily showing our SLAs out to our customers, but we could use automation to comment to provide a similar service to let them know, hey, this is about how long we think that's going to take.
Okay. Now, uh, one thing that we could do is we could uh use automation to automatically resolve requests and basically notify customers that we are resolving them just because uh there's been some inactivity.
Yep, the stale. It hasn't been touched in a while, and it's got mold on it now, so we better throw that thing out. So absolutely, we can use automation to that. We, you know, you decide as a team, how long can something remain inactive? Now granted, there could be different levels of that. Um, but generally speaking, mo- a lot of companies will do a five days of inactivity. Um, so that, you know, because that's gonna affect your reporting, right? You have something sitting out there for 45 days. Now, all your averages got a lot bigger because something sat out there for 45 days. And just like with SLA timers, right, we want to be able to pause something. We also want a way to really get better metrics. So automatically resolving these with our automation, we have a schedule, maybe every day it goes out and says, hey, every business day, it says, has this been touched in the last five business days, let's say? If no, let's go ahead, let's close that out, let's put a comment on that ticket, right? Hey, customer, you know, you haven't looked at this in five days or, or sent us a response back. Um, we're gonna go ahead and close this, feel free to open it back up. That's a very, very common scenario.
Yeah. Okay, one thing that automation can do is automation could automatically route service requests to uh the appropriate individual or to the appropriate team.
And there are so many ways to do this. I'm gonna read what it suggests. So automating the routing of service requests to the appropriate team can expedite resolution. This could be based on the request type or the location of the distributed team. Lots of other things it could be uh related to as well. And so we, I've seen automations um that can also combine sets of fields to determine, right? Because uh, maybe it's a matter of the request type and the location. And so I know I have a team over in the Philippines. So I want to route it over to them, or maybe it's even based on timing between these hours and these hours. Route it to this team that's on between these hours and these hours, route it to the other team.
Okay, uh, so automation could also help auto provision some requests.
Alright, so password resets, account access, software requests, or take an open approach for low risk requests, right? What can, in some cases, what can I connect to, to prompt an action someplace else even? Or to just send an email that says, hey, here's how you uh do your password reset, because maybe there's already something set up that can make that possible for folks. So the key here, right, is going to be for those low risk sort of auto approved requests. Where does that make sense? So that you don't have to have as much human intervention. You really only need it when maybe something, there was a hook up in a system that it didn't go quite well enough, but otherwise, a lot of those types of requests can be fully automated. And every day, I feel like I see more and more, and it's probably not every day, more and more easy connections with automation to go out and, and prompt another. I was gonna say another something, right? Another app. It could prompt a robo-agent. It can prompt lots of things to take actions for you.
Yep. Alright, finally, the last one before we start hitting um and examples, and I don't know if we'll have enough time to hit one of the, maybe we'll hit one of the examples, but
Yeah.
we can automatically approve requests for certain requesters.
I'm always thinking about, yep, if you need that manager approval, if the manager is the one who submitted it, they can approve it. But in this example, for cybersecurity software automatically approved by security team members, and any others require the approval of a security manager. So if the security team member says they want to do something, they get automatically approved for that. But if it comes from outside of that, then the manager needs to get involved. And blue box.
Blue box.
So your project admins can configure notifications for events and send them to specific groups and roles. You can use automation to send notifications for more, more complex events or to a variety of recipients, but verify that the project notifications don't already meet your needs. So basically, what they're saying is, number one, you could create a lot of spam with automation if you're not careful, because when you first enable a JIRA Service Management project, it does have a complete list of the types of notifications, and they are all enabled by default. Hey, I got your request, I'm working on it. Hey, a status changed. Hey, you know, something else, a comment got added, et cetera. And so if you use automation to update folks, they could be getting repeated messages. Um, so first, you know, maybe it's look at your email notifications. Are those optimal? Um, and then if you decide they're not, and you do need to enhance them, that's when you can go into automation to do that. Sometimes people can turn off their notifications. So the out of the box email notifications might not be the right thing, or you know, you might be missing something. And that's another reason why potentially using automation to send those communications, because it doesn't care if somebody said, stop sending me notifications. It is going to send an email because it's using a completely different channel to do that.
Yep. Okay. Let's take a look.
I don't know, we got three minutes.
Yeah, I'm kinda thinking, you, you know, this is a, a good enough places any to stop, so I might want to just stop right here at this point.
So.
So um, a few things to talk about, uh, some programming notes tomorrow. Tomorrow is the best holiday tradition ever on the JIRA life, and that would be Trelloweene. So uh, we welcome back Brittany, Mike Day, and, and a new Trelloweener, Robert King.
Oh, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Three of them are, are, are coming. They're gonna talk about the scary things that happen in the world of Trello and maybe uh, in the world of JIRA as well. So uh, so that's gonna be, that's gonna be a fun show uh for Thursday for the uh, the main JIRA life. Uh, we still have one or two more of uh these sessions and before we uh, we uh call it rap and.
And then everybody gets their 420s, that's awesome, right?
Gets her 420. Everyone joins me and get, and gets their 420s, so.
See, I was gonna laugh, though. It's not gonna work very well, but are they gonna be like this on Trelloweene tomorrow when they?
They might, they might.
We're gonna tell all the horror stories about what's going on or not.
Yeah, we're gonna turn off the lights and, you know, just.
And then the Atlassian admin came out with a hook and said, no, you will use Confluence. It'll be fun.
It'll be fun. Alright, so that is it. We'll see you tomorrow for Trelloweene. And uh, this is King Bob signing off, and Sarah, why don't you sign off as well?
Well, this is Sarah signing off. We'll see you guys. Bye.
Hi, everybody.